Remember Matt giving me this address at one point, and so I'm like, I have an idea where this is. So I started coming up the road and then I stopped in the uh, just up the road here at the. The town garage. Thank you.
Yeah, this is where we normally have been meeting, but there was an issue last month. So the May minutes must have been the tw- should be the 12th. Seven oh four, alright. So let's begin. This is the June sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Meeting of the Monmouth Planning Board. We have a quorum. Rick will be a, Grant will be a voting member tonight. Let's just get rid of these minutes. So first, the December. I don't know the date of the twenty twenty one.
December?
December.
Yeah, December nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
Those meetings, that minutes didn't get approved at the last meeting. Ninth would make sense.
You're right.
Do we need any amendments to those? Well, first, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
The only issue we had was who made the motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting. Everything else was and Larry and I lay claim to it, so.
So who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, seconded by Larry. Okay. Any other amendments?
Okay, but who's making the motion to to amend and approve these minutes now?
Mike is.
I am.
And I second. And there's.
Who amended to say that approval of the November minutes? Who made you second?
Yes, exactly.
We'll keep it simple.
So with those changes, who are, do we have enough people here from that meeting that can vote? Who can vote on that one?
Larry, Rick, Mike, myself.
Okay, yeah, we got plenty. So all in favor? Those minutes again. The the May minutes. I was not at that meeting, so.
Unless somebody needs time to review them, I'd make a motion to accept the May twelfth minutes as written.
Mike did. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. Good, alright. So now we can go to our pending business, which is the shoreline zoning application submitted by Tom Lewinsky for property at thirty seven King Lane in Monmouth. We had a site visit a couple of weeks ago. Anyone remember the date of that? Is that on the minutes what the date of that? Site visit was?
I think it was the twenty sixth.
Probably would have been two weeks from that, yes.
It would have been the twenty sixth.
And I knew I was there with Ray and Mike and Bill Monagle from Cobbsy Watershed. Did you make arrangements? You made arrangements to go at a later time? Alright, so Tom, anything different from when you were here before?
No, um, it's still exactly the way I kind of had proposed it with you even during our site visit and all. And um, you know, I I don't have any real, there's no changes to what the project would entail.
So again, as I remember, your your plan is to raise the existing camp up and deck.
Yes.
Put a foundation under that.
Yes.
Plus a new addition in the rear.
Yes.
Go closer to the shoreline. There's no.
That is correct.
There's no change sort of in that existing footprint as it affects the lake setback.
Yes.
And there's some steepness there at that site. And as I recall, there really are not are there trees that you're gonna have to remove, do you think, to do your project?
I think there's only one cherry tree that's closest to the corner of that proposed addition that would be obviously greater than a hundred feet away from
Right.
the water.
Right.
So.
And I think you talked about that your plan in the future may be to put some you know, herbaceous shrubs.
Yes.
Sort of to kind of protect the shore front edge.
Correct, right.
Pictures? Have you taken some pre-construction yet or?
I did. I emailed those to Matt.
Okay. That's something that we would like to take a look at?
Well, we got to make sure that we've referenced those at least. I guess we can accept his word that he hasn't submitted some photos that have been, what's the word? There's a program you can kind of alter.
All, right.
Pictures, but I mean, we've been to the site, but we need to have those as well as the post.
Yes.
Construction photos. I didn't check with Matt. I mean, he did email me tonight, but it wasn't sort of anything substantive. I'd see, looking at the May minutes, you know, we were trying to confirm the distance to the shore, and I think we thought it was somewhere between eighty eight and ninety feet.
Yes, yeah, I think between the two of us, we were between eighty eight to ninety three feet. Correct. And that that was really in relation to the existing deck.
Right.
Like the enclosed structure itself was a like.
But we have to count from the deck.
Correct, right.
Okay, so you know, the issue for us is, you know, would this proposal to the most practical extent be appropriate to leave where it is, or do we need to consider any changes? I mean, difficulty I think we have is there is that right away behind the property which is not. I think there's one other property accessing it behind you.
Correct.
So you're kind of constrained as far it's going back.
Correct, yes.
That that area is outside of a hundred feet. I think the addition is outside of a hundred feet.
Yes.
The eighty eight to ninety somewhat feet horizontal or up the bank?
Well, it would be a lot greater than ninety something going up the bank.
Yeah.
That's like a horizontal like line.
Okay, that's how I'd like to refer to then if maybe because that corner is less than a hundred feet, so.
Well, we did have comments from Bill Mon- Bill Monagle from Cobbsy Watershed had indicated he was gonna send us a letter. And I didn't receive anything. And as I said, I just, this week I didn't have time to follow up with him, but I think his comment at the site visit was he was concerned that additional excavation work sort of in that shoreline area would perhaps cause more you know, environmental damage than sort of leaving what you have where it is.
Right.
That's what's on the surface now is good, it's stable.
Correct. Very good email to send to you the same pictures that I sent to Matt.
Yep, it's Steve, S T E V E.
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
Yeah. Good speed law, G O O D, S P E E D, L A W dot com. I think the other thing we noted is there's a couple of accessory structures on the property, but they're all outside the hundred foot area. I think Phil Monagle's major concern was during the construction that there be appropriate so fencing, is that everyone's recollection?
So could so fence with hay and possibly erosion mulch as well.
Yes.
Double double fencing. Put fencing down there, so. You guys take hay bales in with it. I'd make a motion to accept the project with conditions.
And we have a second for that?
I'll second.
And I think we just, as a preliminary matter, we we need to kind of address the issue of whether whether this would be this project. Uh, the setback is met to the fullest or the greatest practical extent in its present location. So we can consider the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, location of other structures of this property and adjacent properties, location of septic system. And the type and amount of vegetation to remove to be accomplished, to accomplish the relocation. So I guess as a preliminary, Mike, if you would maybe withdraw your motion. And we have a motion that it would, that the project as proposed in its present location would meet the setback to the fullest practical extent, taking into account that.
That motion then.
You have a second?
I'll go with it.
Terms of discussion, I think, again, what we already talked about, there's quite a bit of slope to that land. And there's really a great potential that if moved, the amount of vegetation to accomplish this would create a greater environmental risk than leaving this in its present location, is that?
Yeah.
The duck and whatnot that's underneath the structure is gonna be hard to reclaim. So you're not gonna gain anything by moving it back.
So all in favor of the motion that this project as proposed would meet the setback to the greatest practical extent?
Perhaps do.
Okay. Four one, did you get that? Okay. So then, Mike, your motion to approve with conditions. And seconded by Ray. So conditions that we would attach to this.
Um, my main concern is the basically a double system of erosion control. I mean, that can.
And then I think.
Matt can tell him what he's supposed to do.
Right.
We've already explained it.
Yes.
So fence it and gonna do it.
Right, no, not over there.
And I think in a lot of the projects on the shoreline, we've also talked about drainage coming off the roof and having some type of erosion control on roof edges.
Yeah, I'm I'm not opposed to like putting gutters up either, like. I mean, I guess my biggest battle over there is gonna be pine trees and the leaves and
Yeah.
you know, I'd have to put some type of a system over the gutters to try to.
Yeah.
I don't remember what to, which way your roof line is running, but.
Parallel to the.
Main thing is to to basically create like a dry well.
Right.
Stone.
Correct.
Six inches to a foot.
Yes.
So that the water can get into that and infiltrate rather than the road.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we don't generally, you know, sometimes we suggest in certain projects a gutter or something that's directing water in a certain way, but I think on yours.
I think he's right, he's gonna be in trouble with it.
Yeah, I think just the.
Not gonna be able to keep the gutters clean, so it's just a full-fledged
Sure.
drip edges, right.
Something around, you know, crush stone around the edge. We'll need post-construction post-construction photographs.
Yes.
The prior code enforcement officer used to like like to see some kind of mo- monument temporary, like a stake. Stakes maybe defining your setback to the lake existing. So that there's a way of in, you know, ensuring that you've kept compliance, that you haven't sort of reduced the setback in any way.
Okay.
So that's usually a good idea to put something down. I'm not sure Matt's been as sticky as that, but Dave, that was always something Dave. When he was here, of course, he could ensure better that that happened and I don't know if there's anything else we need. I think would indicate, you know, any conditions that we receive from Cobbsy Watershed, uh, if they submit any comments that those would have to be met.
Right.
I kind of hate to do that in terms of not knowing what. I I think we have a pretty good idea what Bill's concerns were, but.
I would hate to hold him up just because we didn't get it from Bill.
Right.
And we know.
And maybe we can just forego that. I think this probably covers his his concerns. Think of something, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, Bill had an afterthought after the site visit. I think he would have made the point of getting it to you.
Okay, so I have three conditions, a double system of erosion control, hay bale silt fence. Crushed stone under the drip edge of the roof, six inches to twelve inches depth. Post-construction photographs. The other thing is I don't know what is supposed to happen on these projects is we issue a written decision that gets recorded. And there's a plan, like your plan showing the building should also you know, maybe be attached to that decision. And then that creates kind of a record that this is where you were permitted to put the building. So anyone subsequently coming in after you to change something, you know, we have sort of on record.
Right.
And I know you gave me this plan. Yeah, I think you said at the last meeting, you were a little concerned about. Well, we got this. I don't know whether I can reduce that so we can have it attached. Yeah, I think we could make do with this. I'll try to find a way to reduce this so we can attach it to the decision. If no one has any other conditions they feel should be you can have a vote on the motion to approve this with these three conditions. All in favor? You're abstaining. Alright, so we'll get your written decision. Once we do that, then you can apply for your building permit. So that's a separate. That's a separate permit.
Yes.
And should be good to go.
Okay.
Then when you're all done, yeah, you submit to Matt or the code enforcement officer, the
Yes.
post-construction.
Yes, okay.
Alright, anything else? I have to say, I have, I had surgery this afternoon, so I'm a little bit maybe not as with it as I was.
Just like the rest of us.
Makes you human.
Yeah, man. Oh, well.
Okay.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks for coming in.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sounds good, alright.
So I'll just, I'll get a.
Yeah, you'll get a written decision in the mail or, you know, within the next two weeks. I'll try to get, I'll try to get it, try to get it to you so you can get going. I mean, technically your butters could appeal that.
Okay.
You know, I think they have thirty days to appeal a decision.
Yes.
Nobody showed up at the
Right.
Site visit, no one showed up here tonight. As far as I know, no one went into the town office.
Right.
So I don't think there's gonna be any any issue, but yes, we'll get to your decision.
Okay.
Alright.
Great, very well. Thank you. Thanks. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Okay, we have no new business. I have gotten a few calls, people saying that it's gonna be a solar project proposed on South Monmouth Road, but I haven't seen anything about that. As far as I know, Matt hasn't mentioned to me anything coming in. I mean, I, as I said, I was a little concerned when I saw that. I drove down two oh two today. I don't often go that way, but I saw a couple things. I saw that site near the winter line. And there's something called, I don't know if it's called Main Slab, which is further up two oh two, it's almost, I don't know if it's up as far as the it's on the opposite side of the street from the Mobile Home Park. And that, to me, looked new and the size of it. You know, maybe it was the size of the building that was out on Main Street that eventually came back to us because of the parking lot. Dan and Buffy. What was it called? Chockeys?
Truck Company.
Yeah. But that site, anyone know what I'm talking about? Main Slab? Is it?
Just before Backstreet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he must have had to get a building permit.
Well, I would think, but it it looked to me the clearing envelope was, you know, it was a commercial, it's commercial. Enterprise, unless they live there too, that.
They do.
So maybe, maybe he did it under home occupation, I don't know. I mean, that's, I know one of your concerns, Ray, is that we don't always sort of know what's coming in for permits and whether there are things that should be coming to us that aren't. I don't, I mean, I may be putting words in your mouth that that's not your major concern, but.
It was, let's say, previous CEO.
Yeah.
Not Matt. I think we're damn fortunate that V E P didn't come down and do a quick look at what was happening in Monmouth. In that timeframe.
Yeah. Well, I know a couple of people have commented to me that that Wilson site next to Phil's more was done than was perhaps in the application. Right now, we got this other site, I mean, it could see, I I could see somebody had dug a channel to get the water and.
I almost never take two oh two, but I did just have to the other night.
Yeah.
I saw it.
Yeah.
But yeah, okay, that's probably should have seen that.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't know if it's sort of got the erosion control that it really needs to have. I mean, again, I I guess it's, it's under two thousand feet, I guess, two thousand square feet. Code enforcement might be able to deal with that, but it's hard for me to gauge how big it was. I mean, I was going by, I went by twice, so I kind of did look at it. Another thing I noticed in two oh two is the disc golf has put in a, looks like they've started a building there.
They've had that foundation there for a while.
Yeah, I think.
They have a couple of months.
So the issue there is I suppose, I I don't know whether they have an existing course that they've and whether there was any work done on that. I mean, that would seem to be a planning board issue.
There's also a group that wants to expand the parking at Comston. I seriously doubt it's gonna be mentioned to us.
Where will they go? At the cemetery on one side.
Well, they want, they want us to give up the the ma- the mausoleum.
Uh huh.
And on top of that area.
Yeah.
On there. I thought that after just having done two, two years, about three years ago, when that other expansion was made.
Well.
So so the Cemetery Association right now is having a little little spat because we feel that it's a historic thing.
Yeah. Is the mausoleum ever used?
Not anymore. No, because family put in a refrigerated
Yeah.
section in their building, so.
Yeah.
It would have to be a play.
Yeah.
It had been used for the mowing machines and whatnot, but we bought a building. And we had to go through an act of Congress to get permission from Comston to put that little building there. So it took seven months to get permission. My immediate response was I don't have a problem with it, we're not using it. But then two or three other board members said, well, it's got historic value that ought to be considered. I'm not real good at that, so.
You can punt.
But I did think about the added area.
As far as these areas are concerned, is that something that Matt is aware of or you don't?
I don't know, you know, I didn't, he sent me an email. I was gonna ask him about those specific sites. You know, they may be fine. I mean, it's hard for me, as I say, to eyeball something. I mean, I, my as I said, I I got a lot of sort of feedback on. As I said, I, I got a lot of sort of feedback on. Wilson's other work, and so now that I know that's who's doing this other piece.
Didn't he come in and get a permit for the addition, right?
Well, he came to us and he withdrew, you know, he came into the meeting. And we said, you're gonna do this, that, and the other, and then, then he decided to scale it back, right? And he withdrew it. And I don't know whether that was when still when Dan was here or whether Matt was.
Dave was the starter. And that was one of the things when Dave came here that night to offer his help, that was one of the things he wanted to discuss. But he was blown off, so.
So they have, the, the town has hired another part-time person. My understanding is this fellow was working, is working in Belgrade as well. Belgrade lost their code enforcement officer nine months ago.
So we now have two part-time code enforcement officers.
Richard's been allocated sixteen. Out of Belgrade.
Is it to do inspections, or did they designate what he's doing?
I questioned that last night, he isn't certified to do MIBA. Okay. So that's gonna.
For the building co, he's not certified.
So we have to hire, like me as a builder, would have to hire a third-party inspector. That's, yeah.
A lot of towns are doing that, but it's kind of a.
On a small project, it's kind of a pain all around for everybody.
But I will say, the building permits expense isn't as great as it was. Because you've got the expensive hiring, hiring up third-party inspectors, so. Cause Monmouth was way above a lot of other towns.
And so they took that into account?
Yeah, it's a matter of convenience, you know, pretty much. And so Matt didn't have the time to do inspections anyhow. So now Richard will have, he'll be with us two days a week.
He'll have the time, but he's not qualified.
Not for something that, you know, yeah, foundation work or anything, you know, electrical, whatever, whatever, bingo. So he, he can do the simple, basic patio inspection.
Or, or make sure, can you make sure that they're following meeting setbacks and things like that, right?
Yeah, now he'll be, yeah, I think he'll be a plus for Matt.
Anything at this point, because if somebody returns phone calls, it's gonna make quite a difference.
And the benefit from a third-party inspector is you're paying them, so they're more likely to call you back.
I, I don't, I don't have a real problem with that, I did it first, but now that I've seen it operate, it's not. Just, you're right, they're being paid, they show up. But right now. I don't think I have a customer right now that'll tell you that. Actually, I did. Suddenly get frustrated and just say.
The other thing on Rich that come up. Last night was. The need of his coming down from Belgrade for every planning board meeting. My simple statement was, if it's a light, not much on the tender. Then why should he be required to make the trip? I mean, if he wants to, he's welcome, but. He was, you know, it was obvious he didn't wanna be. Required to, to attend every meeting, even though there was nothing on.
Yeah, I think he told me that Belgrade's. Planning board meetings were the same night, or something, or something like that, a selectmen meeting, uh, something conflicting.
I wonder if it would be, or how hard it would be to get. A report from codes telling us what permits they've issued. So that we would know whether the Wilson thing was. Taken care of, rather than us sitting here wondering, guessing. Seems like we used to get that.
We can ask. I mean, Justin seems pretty open to working with the different committees, so.
That would make our life a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Justin does have a problem, then probably should ask him how Dave Shaw managed to do it for years. He would do the report for the selectmen. Okay, everything was there, permits issued, what it was, that, that, that. Every month, they, they got that from David. So, make, you know, put fun of the information to us. How simple is that? I mean, I used to get it. Selectmen.
I meant to check. You know, what happens is some of the terms of the members. Expire June thirtieth. And I didn't. Get that list, I think Linda sent me something last year, but it may have been only on the ones. That were expired, did you expire last year and have to renew?
I think I did too.
So we need to check. And see who's, who is up. I, I suspect John is up, I may be up. Like, maybe, I don't know. But it, I don't know if it's on the website. Yeah, good to know.
Your select board is on the website, but I don't think we are on as far as expiration.
You know, I used to get kind of a list. At one point, when I got a list of all the members of the. Boards, it would have the term on it, but. I'll have to ask Justin. See, Monday, I guess, is a holiday, so I'll have to do it next Tuesday, but.
Some people.
Well, I'm sure the town, town, maybe the town. I'll see if I have something, but I just didn't have time to, I thought of it this week and I just couldn't get to it. Okay. Anything else you wanna bring up about the?
At the meeting last night, one of the so, selectmen brought up. The lack of permit for something under two hundred square feet. His concern was shoreline zoning. We really don't need to address that in shoreline zoning, I, I don't believe, because. You can't have a principal or accessory structure within a hundred feet, a new one. That you, they're not gonna get a building permit. And anything that happens in shoreline zoning comes before the planning board, so. My feeling is, is that. That two hundred square feet is fine. Everywhere is outside of shoreline zoning, because we've got it covered already.
Well, I think Dave used to say, he, he would not charge for those permits. But he thought it was good to get people to make that application so we could determine it's not a setback issue.
It's an enforcement issue. Plain and simple, it's that.
It is, the concern wasn't that it was just happening and nobody knew or, or that just thought it ought to be checked. No matter what.
Yeah, the, the concern was that somebody built a garage, probably, you know, or a big shed or, you know, whatever. Or even brought in a commercially steel shed and put it twenty feet from the water. Come on, guys, I mean, you know, shoreline zoning is plain and simple there. So it's an enforcement issue, as, as I see it. We don't need to say.
Well, one of the things that's being missed, I think, is, is the comprehensive. Ordinance we have also requires a permit for Phil, and I don't think that's happening. Pulled out of my driveway tonight to come here, and my neighbor, I see he has a sign, he's on the lake, Clean Phil Wanted. And. I doubt he's. Probably doesn't even know, maybe that, he might have a, have a permit before he puts something in there. Pretty close to the.
I guess. You know, if somebody doesn't know on a simple. Item. Is he, is that individual gonna, you know, in other words, that he would need a permit to put in a ten-by-ten shed, you know, seventy, sixty feet from the water? Is he gonna know that he should have had a permit? Is he even gonna think about that? I mean, you know. Where, where, where are you gonna go with policing this thing?
That's why, yeah, you gotta decide how much code enforcement you're, you're gonna have.
Well, we, we've gone from very little to somebody who. Enjoyed his days by driving around checking places and driving, getting the boat and go around and check the shoreline, so.
Now we're coming around.
Big change.
And I think having two people do code enforcement. You know, if it's not like a department where people are communicating.
Communication is gonna be.
Yeah, it's gonna be. Don't know.
So, do you wanna? Send something to the board of selectmen relative to requiring a permit? To something less than two hundred square feet in shoreline zoning, I should, just can, I can convey it to them verbally.
Well. I mean it.
We're trying to read the.
I think the ordinance, I mean, that's, that was Dave's, everything required. His view was everything, other than a repair. New construction required at least a permit, and he didn't, I don't think he charged for sheds. But I don't know how clear it is in, in here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think that floated, it was almost like Dave wanted an eight-foot fence too, but.
Well, and you just, you get into the issue of site fences. I think Dave wanted to know what was going on.
Too much, so. A, a lot of sure property owners. Are not year-round residents of Monmouth and really don't have. A good idea of. What they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing, but they should be calling. Matt or some, you know. Hey, I'm thinking of doing this, but.
This day and age, there should be some assumption. That they ought to be calling town office, I mean. And there's, there's very few places. Unless you get up into the county somewhere where there's not regulations, so.
Well. I mean, who brought this issue up? One of, one of the existing select people. And was code enforcement there? Was there anyone to give feedback?
Well. Rich was there to start with, and then he left. And Matt didn't make it, so.
Well, I was just trying to look at the building permit requirement. Yeah, no person, firm, corporation shall place any new. Structure, building a structure without first obtaining a permit. Uh, then it says, except. Okay, yeah, so it, it accepted, there's an exception for an accessory structure. Not exceeding two hundred square feet in floor area. So. That appears to say that they don't need a permit for anything. Not exceeding two hundred square feet. That's right there in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think we, you know, just won't get it wrong.
Okay, any other public comment? I mean, do we know if anyone tried to log in?
No, no one did.
I don't have anything else unless any.
That's easy to remember.
Alright, well, I'll try to track down the information on the terms and let everybody know. Cause there's a, an application for those that have to. Consider being renewed.